I'll call this meeting to order. This is the Nottingham Planning Board for Wednesday, April 28th at 7 o'clock, 2021. In anticipation of the extension of the executive order 2021-4, the Nottingham Planning Board will be holding a virtual hearing. Access to the meeting is given through Zoom. Let me just make sure, am I off mute? Because last time I read all of this, you just get a confirmation. All right. Thank you. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting. If anybody has difficulties during the meeting, please call Joanna at 679-9597. Okay, at this time, I would like to just have the board introduce themselves. Well, let me just do roll call so everybody doesn't talk at the same time. So I'll just introduce the planning board members, and then we'll get going on our public hearings. And for tonight, we have a couple of public hearings, and then later on in the public meeting, we'll be talking about a conditional use permit application. We have a draft review, so we'll be going over those items tonight. Let me just do a call of members. Ed Veal. Gary Anderson.
Here.
Ian McKinnon.
Here.
Tyler Eaton.
Here.
Leanne Gast.
Yeah.
Robert Davies.
Here.
Susan Mooney. I just wanted to confirm, Susan did email saying that she was not feeling well, so she was going to skip tonight's meeting. So in light of that, we actually have two spots where we need alternates, and Robert Davies and Leanne Gast are our two alternates. Thank you for attending tonight. So for Susan Mooney's seat, I'll seat Robert Davies, and for our vacant planning board seat, I'll seat Leanne Gast. All right, and so let's go right into our hearings tonight. We have two. The first one being case 21006-SIT. This is an application from the owner of Precision Cut Lumber, requesting site plan approval for a sawmill and furniture production business. His property is located on Old Turnpike Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and is identified as map four, lot one, sub lot one.
Mr. Chair, I'll jump in here just for the rest of the board. I'll have to recuse myself from this case in particular for voting or discussion amongst the board, since Mr. Demanche has reached out, and somebody else from our firm is actually working on this with him. So I'll have to sit on the sidelines for this one in terms of planning board discussion.
Yep, appreciate that. If we were in person in meeting, I would make you get up from the seat and go sit in the public. But you're fine in your own seat. And we do not have another alternate, otherwise I would place somebody in your stead, but we still have definitely a quorum that we can move forward with. We did receive requests from the owner to continue this, and I just want to confirm from either the owner or the owner's representative that this will be continued, and if there was a date that they felt that it could be continued to.
I can answer that. I talked to Barry in our office.
Could you please identify yourself?
Yep, so this is Ian McKinnon with Jones Beach Engineers. I spoke with the client today. Like I said, another member of our office is going to be working on the site plan per the meeting with the planning board chairman, and just from the last meeting. The intent is that we have a couple more days' worth of work to complete that plan, so the intent would be to submit at the beginning of next week in hopes of being heard on the May 12th planning board meeting.
Okay.
And that would include, we'd most likely submit updated waivers, understanding that there was originally quite a lengthy list of waivers submitted. So the project manager will be submitting an updated list with that once he consults with Mr. Demanche.
Okay, great. And so it would be a continuance to May 12th. I do want to at least alert the board that we did, myself and, met with the applicant to go over those waivers as we indicated in our previous meeting. There were quite a few waivers that we felt potentially were not applicable or that they were easily obtainable for the site plan. So we would expect that those waiver requests have reduced quite a bit. So there was a good meeting, and I think we've got the right path to get to, you know, a completed site plan. So with that, I would entertain a motion for continuance to the May 12th meeting.
Mr. Chair, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we continue case 21-006-SIT to Wednesday, May 12th at 7:00 PM with deliverables to staff by that Monday at noon.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Ed Veal.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon. Oh, sorry, you're out, reading from my list. Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Tyler Eaton.
Yes.
Leanne Gast.
Yeah.
Robert Davies.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, so we'll continue it, and we'll see you on May 12th with some deliverables prior to that, so appreciate it. So we'll go on to the next case, and Mr. McKinnon, you can unrecuse yourself, so you will become a full voting and participating member once again.
I'll take my seat again.
Yeah, all right. The next case is 21-007-SUB. It's an application from James and Jan Tuttle, requesting a two-lot conventional subdivision. Property is located at 15 Canard Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and identified as map 13, lot 11. Canard is a scenic road in Nottingham. Yeah, I don't see the size of this, but it's approximately 32 acres. So we have received all of the application material. Trying to pull up to make sure. We have to vote for completeness. Pardon me while I organize a few things. Okay. So we, like I said, we received all of the application materials.
Hello, everyone?
Hello, yep. We're going to continue. Sorry, there's a little pause in my response. I was searching for some materials. So I guess we'd go through the, if items were there for acceptance. And we did receive a letter from RPC, the review letter. I guess I'd just turn to Steph to see if she could just articulate if all of the material is there.
Sure. For the most part, everything seems to be in order. My comments were mostly, you know, regarding notes and details on the plan itself. The only thing that I flagged was I wasn't able to find the measurement of the proposed lot. It looks to be about 200 feet, but I would just want to confirm that as it doesn't need a variance if it's 200 feet or over.
The frontage?
Other than that, the frontage, sorry, yes.
Okay. So is there any questions on whether we need to have more information for completeness, or are we ready to accept or continue or deny it? Those are our options. I guess I'd ask the board if they've reviewed this, and if someone would make a motion to accept that.
Chair, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we accept case 21-007-SUB as complete.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll take a vote on this. Ed Veal.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Tyler Eaton.
Yes.
Leanne Gast.
Yeah.
And Robert Davies.
Yes.
Okay, Chair votes yes. So now that the application is accepted, we do need to consider and determine whether the application is a development of regional impact, and a vote from the board is required. For it to be a development of regional impact, it's usually much larger of a type of subdivision or there's more impacts. This is a two-lot subdivision, 30 acres for one lot, and I believe about two acre, well, a little more than two acres for the other lot.
Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I move that case 21-007-SUB is not a development of regional impact.
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion on the regional impact? I'll take a vote here. Ed Veal.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Tyler Eaton.
Yes.
Leanne Gast.
Yeah.
Robert Davies.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So at this point, we probably would want to go through and have a presentation by the applicant explaining their proposal.
This is Scott Franco from New Hampshire Land Consultants. If I could share my screen?
Please.
Can anybody see that?
Yep.
So Scott Franco is from New Hampshire Land Consultants here representing the Tuttles tonight. As you said, it's property is located at 15 Canard Road. The existing parcel is tax map 13, lot 11, and that's this entire parcel. It's 32.97 acres. And this area that's identified is where we're trying to subdivide a just over two and a half acre lot. I'll move to the subdivision proposed conditions. So what we're proposing is to subdivide a 2.62 acre lot with 200 feet of frontage. The frontage is noted within in this note right here. We do that on all our plans is written as these boxes will note the frontage. So the frontage is 200 for the proposed lot, and for the remainder, there's 1,288 feet plus or minus left. What we did is...
Can I just interrupt you? The plan isn't changing, so I don't know if you were thinking on going to a different plan. We're just seeing the same first plan.
Well, it says your screen sharing is paused.
We see you. I mean, we see the plan, but it's the...
The overall.
The overall sheet still.
I'll reshare it.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
So I'll go back a little bit. This is the, it's the sheet four of six within the plan set, showing the proposed conditions of the proposed lot that we're proposing to subdivide out of the 32. This is just an overall, kind of showing you where the new lot is. This here is the existing home and sheds and stuff. What we're proposing is 200 feet of frontage, and the frontage is shown right here in this box and in this box of the remaining land. 200 feet of frontage for the proposed and about 1,288 feet plus or minus for the overall parcel remaining. What we did is we came over at least 200 feet this side, and there's an existing trail that we matched up with that's coming out on the Canard Road and where we propose the common driveway. One of the aspects of this application is that it's on a scenic road. This road was, there was a lot of work done in this area, and there's actually no trees in front of that stone wall. So the scenic road permit, we're not showing any trees because there's no trees there to be cut. So like I said, the proposed lot is 2.62 acres with 200 feet of frontage, and the remainder will be 30.35 acres with the 1,288 feet of frontage. Along with the application, we're asking for two waivers. One is to impact the wetland buffer to get the driveway through to the buildable area out back of the lot. And the second waiver is a waiver from surveying the entire 32 acres, and we surveyed approximately three, three and a half acres to prove out the lot and the wetlands within that area, and did two test bits for the 4K area. We did receive the review from Stephanie on Monday. We resubmitted plans yesterday. There were some minor comments, and I can walk through those with the response letter that we submitted. The first one was about the waiver, and there was no response required. The second one was final dimensions of the lot. Like I said, we show the frontage, and this plan, we show the bearings and distances around the entire lot. And then, and again, this is the recordable plan showing all the geometry for the lot. The waiver is for the remainder of the 32 acres. The next comment was proposed lot, the 200 feet of frontage. As I pointed out, that's clearly shown on sheets four and five. And then the existing trail, what's the nature of it? Are there easements, functions? Currently, it's just the property owner's existing trail to access his land on that side, so there's no easement because it's on his property. And we proposed a common driveway easement within the location of the common driveway, which will be right where that trail is. So they'll be able to still access that trail and come out to the backside of the property with this common driveway easement. The next one was about wetland scientist stamp. That is shown on several pages, right on sheet three on the cover. And I believe there's sheet two as well. Lou Curly from Gold Environmental did the wetland delineation on it. Underground electric, we did revise the plans. We didn't show it originally, and we did revise it, and we're showing it coming from this existing utility pole into the driveway along the driveway out to the buildable area. We have noted as proposed underground utilities. Fire protection, we did add a note noting where the closest cistern is. I'm not sure if that's sufficient of what Steph was looking for, but there's a cistern located up the road at the intersection of Freeman Hall and Patriots Lane. That's about 3,500 feet from here. The intersection of Garland, Freeman, and Canard is right here, just a few hundred feet up, but the cistern is up closer, up towards Route 4. And I believe that was all the questions that Steph had on her initial review. And what we have left to do is submit this DES. We don't do that until after at least the first meeting, so we're waiting on that. And I believe that covers the application.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'd like to see if there's any questions from the board for the applicant, if there's some...
Mr. Chair, I have just one question.
Yeah.
Mr. Franco, can you just confirm, so there's no stone wall modifications, correct? There's already an existing break in the stone wall, I assume? There's no need to widen that?
Correct, yeah. There is an existing trail that goes right through there, and that's where we're proposing the driveway. No, no stone wall.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Veal. I had just a few, the updated plans fixed a few things. There was like an old note that showed 150 feet of frontage, which is gone now, so that's good. So just a one point, with any kind of scenic road access with a new driveway under section 15.3.6 of the subdivision regs goes to, has to go to Concom as well for comment. So before we can get final approval. Let's see. I had a question about the way the driveway is shown on this screenshot here. The way it's looking like it's proposed is proposed to be almost looking like a shared driveway with branching onto or expanding onto the other lot. Is that just kind of the way it's drawn, or?
No, we show it because of the existing trail was there, and we wanted to leave that access for the owner when this lot gets transferred to the other family member. They leave that access, so there's a common driveway. They would have access to that common driveway to the existing trail.
Okay, so that's...
Showing on that.
So is that going to be kind of like, almost like a shared driveway? Is like a second driveway for the parent lot?
It's a shared common drive, I guess. It's access to that property that exists currently. You didn't want to...
And you were going to have an easement for that?
An easement shown on the plans.
Okay.
It's shown, shown on this one, and then again on the recordable.
Yeah, and I think I'd have to go back and look. I think that's allowed, because I think that the next driveway, I'm sure, is well over 300 feet away from that one.
Oh, yeah.
And then the only other thing I had on here, so where the septic area is shown, the 4K area, there's supposed to be a 75-foot setback from wetlands. It's 50 feet from poorly drained soil, 75 from very poorly drained, but it says also 75 from any wetlands. I'm not certain those soils, I think they're flagged here as just wetlands. So that might have to be shifted back some.
So are you saying that very poorly drained 75?
Well, the way that the zoning ordinance reads, it's under the wetlands overlay district. Article, I'd have to look at article 3B, I think it is. It indicates that no septic pollution control device or... Give me a minute, I'll pull up the actual verbiage again. Overlay district against, as well as conservation areas, I apologize. Indicates under number two, pollution control, no privy cesspool, septic tank, or sewage disposable, disposal area shall be constructed or maintained less than 75 feet from the edge of a public water body, floodplain, wetland, intermittent stream, or seasonably wet soil.
Okay.
And then it goes on from there. No other structure shall be built or maintained.
The classification of the wetland doesn't matter at 75 regardless, okay?
The way this is written, it just says from wetlands. So I'd just say, take a look at that, and you can definitely make comment on it. But in that, everything else looked, like I said, straightforward with everything.
Any other comments from board members?
Just one, Mr. Chair. In regard to the, what the existing buildings are, I know the applicant mentioned something about house and sheds, but I wasn't sure what that was exactly.
There's an existing house quite a ways down the road where my cursor is right now. The house is here, and then there's an outbuilding on this side, another outbuilding on this side.
Single family home.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do have a couple waivers that we can act on now or we can act on after the public hearing. If any of the board members are comfortable with making any motions. Well, let's open it up to a public hearing, hear any butter comments, and we'll go from there. So the way I'd like this to work, if there are, if there is public that would like to make a comment, please, I guess, put it in the, what are we doing, Steph? Are we putting it in the chat, or no, no chat?
They can use the chat if that is easier. Otherwise, if you're on a computer, if you go to the participants button down at the bottom, you can click on that and right-click on your name and say raise hand, and that's the easiest way to get our attention.
Okay. And then if there's, I guess, if there is somebody who wants to speak, if I don't see anybody raising their hand, I will add that we did receive a... Oh, somebody's waving. Yeah, if you could take Jan off of mute.
Okay. Hello, I'm Jan Tuttle, and I want to thank the planning board and our neighbors for being here to consider our conventional lot subdivision. We're doing this not for financial gain, but to help my daughter. My daughter is a widow with two boys, ages nine and 12. It's important for this young family to live near us so that we can help with the boys' school in sports schedules while my daughter works full-time and supports them. I hope that you will vote in favor of this subdivision. Scott Franco, which of New Hampshire Land Consultants has used his knowledge and expertise to carefully survey the parcel and inspect the land to show that it is buildable. And so I really hope that you'll vote in favor of us. Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, thank you for your input. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak to or for or against this application? I do want to just say that we have received a comment letter from, and I'm not quite sure I can read the last name, but 38 Canard Road. They have no objections to the Tuttles' plan and wish them luck with their project. So I would put that in the favorable category. Any other public that would like to speak? Okay. Hearing done, I'll close the public meeting and bring it back to the board. We have a couple of options here. We do need to act on the waivers. And if I bring those waivers back up, one was for the topography, not having to show the total lot topography, which is very common when we have large lots like this. And I'm sorry... Yes?
I just want to make sure. I just received a comment from John Desmond, and he said he's in support as well. Want to make sure that goes into the record.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Yes.
So we have, let's just do these one at a time. So there is a waiver for article eight, section 8.3.5, to not require a survey of the entire 32 parcels. There is a, portions of the lot being subdivided are covered under that, under end topographic survey, just not the entire lot.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the waiver for not surveying the entire lot, which is under article eight, section 8.2.5. Hopefully, I got that right.
8.3.5?
8.3.5, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Let me take a vote on the waiver. Ed Veal.
Yes.
Ian McKinnon.
Yes.
Gary Anderson.
Yes.
Tyler Eaton.
Yes.
Leanne Gast.
Yeah.
Robert Davies.
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. And the second waiver, I guess Steph or Joanna, I don't have that waiver form in front of me, so you can read off the section. Okay. Yeah, I didn't have the one there. So the other one is to allow a driveway within the wetland buffer to access the buildable area. I guess, Mr. Frankewitz, could you just, um, point out that area and maybe just describe that for the board a little bit more in detail on what what alternatives there are and where in the buffer that the driveway would, would run into?
Sure. So right here is a 50 foot wetland buffer from, from this side. And then as you come in, the 50 foot buffer would, it actually goes over each other so that it crosses each other. And this is the section coming through here that would be within that buffer to get out to this, this area of buildable area of buildable lot.
It looks like you may have chose to put those kind of equidistant between the two
We did.
Wetlands.
Yes, and we did show a culvert, just if anything gets built up and has to go through there. Uh, we don't anticipate that, but getting that driveway through there at the, at the best location. There's no other, there's a lot of wetlands on, on the upper side. And then as you go down the lot on this side, this wetland continues until it crosses over Canard Road. So it's quite a distance and we are trying to keep the lot as, as small as possible, but as developable as possible.
Mr. Chair, I don't have the, the waiver, uh, I don't see it in, in the items online. Maybe it is somewhere. There it is. Thank you. I was trying to see the section of a that they're, they're looking at Article 22.4. Just want to see what that article is.
While Ed's looking that up, any comments from any of the other board members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I had a question, I guess more procedural. If, if we wanted to entertain a possible condition, um, because I do, I do like to place equidistant between the well ends. Um, looks like we provide well over 25, maybe closer to 40 feet, 30 feet. If we want to place a condition requiring the stakeout of the center line of that driveway to ensure it follows this alignment, does that have to be included in the waiver or a motion for the waiver? Or would that just need to be noted and then included at the final conditions of approval?
Um, it would be in the conditions of the final approval. Uh, the waiver would just be the waiver for that section. We wouldn't be able to add something.
Okay. I just want to confirm.
Yeah.
That's what, and that's what I was trying to look at. I actually don't know that they need this waiver. I don't think we have currently a buffer. I mean, we do act, maybe that they're asking for the, the section that just has natural features that provide buffers between lots or sections. Shall be preserved, but I don't think we actually have any true buffer area right now of, of wetlands. I guess this would be like just a precautionary thing. So I guess it would be doing it to clear that, to avoid any headaches from, from further on, but that's section specifically mentions we can request an advisory opinion from the Concom. So I don't know if it'd make more sense to wait until after they meet with the Concom to discuss the scenic road access and then also, um, just have them, you know, discuss this so they can have comment on it before we act on the waiver.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against getting their opinion. I, I just don't, I think it's pretty cut and dry that it's well, I shouldn't even say cut and dry because it's wetlands. But it I don't see a lot of other options that would be less impactful to a buffer.
And these weren't flagged as, as vernal pools. Is that correct, Mr. Frankewitz?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm fine with acting on this tonight. Uh, where is the, can someone pull up that, um, the waiver on the screen again, please? Thank you. So, Mr. Veal, I move, um, that we approve the waiver request for really from section 20 of the subdivision regulations, Article 20, section 2.4, to allow the driveway within the, uh, well and buffer to access the buildable area on the parcel.
I'll second that one too.
Okay. That was Ian that seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, uh, discussion from the board?
Yeah, my question, this is Buzz. My question would be if a waiver is not required, why are we voting on it?
Well, I don't think it's totally clear that one isn't required. I guess, I guess.
Then I guess second part of the question would be, why don't we wait and see what, uh, the Conservation Commission says before we vote on this?
We can. I mean, the board, board has that option to, to wait. I just didn't see that. Well, my opinion is that it wouldn't be any more impactful. I think it would be, this is about the least impactful, but we can have the Conservation Commission weigh in, get their opinion. Ed, do you happen to have that section?
Yeah, it's 20.2.4. It's page 82 of the subdivision regs. The short paragraph, um, it's about conservation of natural features.
Yeah. Is it short enough that you could just read it? I don't have it in front of me.
So the development of all subdivisions shall, to the greatest extent possible, preserve in their natural condition important natural features of the site. The planning board may request an advisory opinion from the Conservation Commission and the determination of the value of the natural features and the boundaries of any natural systems and questions. Examples of such areas include, but are not limited to watercourses, wetland areas, steep slopes, larger unique trees and woodlands or other unique habitat areas. Natural features that provide buffers between lots or sections of subdivision shall be preserved to enhance privacy and aesthetic value. The establishment of open spaces areas shall be created with the intent of preserving large unfragmented blocks. So that part's not germane here.
Yeah.
So I guess if we were to approve this waiver, it's a waiver, the only thing that's a requirement or would be waivable would be us requesting an opinion on this one item from the Conservation Commission, right?
Right, because right now the Conservation Commission, they're notified solely because of the
Scenic Road.
The scenic road.
Yeah.
And is limited right now to the stone wall tree removal and driveway locations.
Which is what this waiver is all about.
Yeah, I, I'd like to hear from any other board members that has an opinion on this. There's a, there's a motion and a, and a second for that motion, so I would move that ahead. But this is the discussion time if, uh, before we do vote.
This is Leanne Gass.
Yeah.
So with Canard being a scenic road, the concern is the stone wall and the trees, which there are no trees and the stone wall already has a natural gap. What would be the other concern in having to do with the it being a scenic road? Just the wetlands? And there really is no concern with that now either?
No, it wouldn't. Yeah, it would be the wetlands, which they're not in, they're not disturbing. But also the driveway location. And, you know, the rest of the frontage looks like it's got stone walls and may not have trees, but it's definitely has stone walls. So really the jurisdiction of the planning board, if we requested their opinion, would be their opinion on the driveway location within the lot that goes between those two wetlands. So it would be within the wetland, 50 foot wetland buffer. And if we feel that that's of value to get an opinion from the Conservation Commission, then that's not, that's not quite what the motion is, but you can certainly vote against that.
And I'm fine either way to honest, I mean, honestly, I, you know, I didn't want to have that be the delay of the application, but they, because of the scenic road access, they, they have to go to the Concom anyway. So I'm fine with rescinding my motion for now and, and until, uh, and just ask, just ask for that advisory opinion. I don't think it's going to do any harm. My guess is they just have some, some comment as to the, where the driveway is and the culvert and such. So, um, I guess at this point, instead of voting on the motion, I would, I would rescind my motion, but that I think requires a second to be rescinded first.
I'll second that partially because thinking about it more, I'm not sure that it there needs to be a waiver. I think it's just up to the board to make that decision if we need their feedback from Concom, but I'll second the motion to rescind. If we think we're already going to receive feedback from the Concom because they already have to be there.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, it, that's, that's fine. So we don't need to vote to rescind it, but, um, so the second's been rescinded and the motion's been rescinded. So we're back to kind of square zero with that. And I guess, uh, for the applicant, they do need to, um, go to the Conservation Commission just to make sure because it's on the scenic road. And we'll have the Conservation Commission weigh in on, um, the driveway location in the lot. Okay. So then on to, uh, we've got the public hearing. I think at this point, we would, um, need a little bit more information from the applicant as far as the Conservation Commission before we'd, uh, be able to entertain a, a final vote.
Joanna, do you happen to know when the next Concom meeting is in rush to our meetings?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
I'll reach out to the chair. What's, what is the chair's name again? For the Concom?
Sam Damarra.
Okay.
I'm just pulling up their meeting schedule. Let's see if this is accurate. It says, um, May 10th is the next one. Second Monday is at 7:00 PM. So that's a kind of puts them again right before our next meeting, but they've been pretty good about turning it around. And I think this is a pretty minor, um, a pretty, pretty minor subdivision or minor item. It's not that there's a lot of items on here. So I think I'd be okay with continuing to the, the May 12th if the applicant is and the rest of the board is.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds fair.
I would concur because I imagine there wouldn't really be any plan modifications because there isn't really much that could be changed. Based on their feedback.
Okay.
I think that's fine too.
Just want to reach back out to the, um, applicant. Uh, you understand what we're talking about there?
Yeah, we'll get on the May 10th Concom meeting and be back on the 12th.
Okay.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, it's Mr. Veal. I move that we continue case, uh, 21-007-SUB, May 12th at 7:00 PM with any new deliverables, um, to us by May 10th at noon.
I'll second that.
I'm going to give that one to Buzz.
There you go.
Uh, any other discussion on that? I'll just do a vote here, Ed Veal?
Yes.
Ian McKinnon?
Yes.
Gary Anderson?
Yes.
Tyler Eaton?
Yes.
Leanne Gass?
Yes.
Robert Davies?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. So we will, um, look forward to getting a little bit more information after the Concom and then see you on the 12th.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, well, that ends our public hearing for this evening, but, uh, we do have another item on our agenda, which is the conditional use permit application, uh, draft review. And either Joanna or Steph, if you could just go through what we have in our package here and then we can kind of get started on some comments. If, uh, we've got anybody that's, uh, got any comments right now.
Would you like me to share the screen with the, um, conditional use permit?
Um, yeah, you can do that and then we can, or I could too, but yeah, just to see if we can scroll down or we just kind of go through it and see if there's any comments throughout the document.
Okay. Can you see, are you seeing the conditional use permit right now?
Yes.
Okay. Right. Um, so this is what I came up with, with a couple of towns, um, samples. I realize that there's some, uh, recommendations from Sue Mooney to kind of work on its formatting, but other than that, anything else you guys can recommend? I will take notes.
Okay. Want to see if there's any members that have comments on, I guess we just make it easy and go through or whatever section you have comments on, we can skip right to it.
So, Mr. Chairman, um, this is, I guess this is more a question for Joanna. So I, I know, I think there's like the stratum one that we were using as a possible guide. Is that first section of, I guess it's on the second page where it starts the supporting information? That section up until, um, I guess it's up until page five. It looks like, are those, do you know if those were taken directly from? They look like they're more vague, like they might apply for multiple. Uh, or I guess should I say is they're kind of just project wide and not specific to the conditional use of the wetland ordinance? Right? Do you know, do you have to tuck your head? So it looks like it's almost would apply to any conditional use permit that was allowed?
That's the way I took it, yes. And we do have a conditional use permit, um, called out in the open space development section as well. So we don't just have wetlands for conditional use permits.
All right, that was my next question. So has, has that been, so we've had that, but we haven't actually had a formal application?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That was, that was my only thought is that section, if this was just for the wetland conservation area, then we wouldn't need that supporting information section, I think, for right now. But I think because it does show up in other areas and I guess it, if we decide to add any in the future, it still applies. So I was, I was fine with that because I think it, uh, you know, oftentimes if it's a, if one of the questions doesn't apply to the project, they can just write NA, not applicable. I think it's fine to have those couple extra pages.
Okay.
I think that makes sense because we could, we could theoretically, um, yeah, decide on using the conditional or applying this to other uses. Could be many areas that this falls into, I think.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yeah. And to be clear, we would use this going forward probably for open space as well, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, my original thought, Mr. Veal, was, uh, I'm like, oh, it's kind of, kind of long. It seems like overkill, but then going through it, I understand why it is and, and other towns use a very similar document. And I think it makes sense, um, to try to have that conformity between other towns that way when an applicant's coming in, if, if they deal with multiple towns or whatever, they're used to the same, same thing and providing same information. Um, so it makes it easier for applicants. And, uh, I said a couple of items on here. On, and the supporting information, the second question, detail any existing violations. Was wondering if we should add, uh, violations and or non-conformance of the Nottingham zoning ordinance?
That's a good idea.
And then on page three, the question about the, will the location, nature, design and height of the structure? Uh, I was thinking about if we want to add, um, some additional verbiage to say in height of, of any new or modifications to existing structures or appurtenances. I don't know if we want to capture that in that section.
You, could you say that again?
Yeah, so the, the, so right now that reads will the location, nature, design and height of the structures and its appurtenances, uh, its scale with reference to surroundings. And it goes on from there. I was wondering if we should add some language to capture to, to define that it's both new, new structures and modifications to existing structures or appurtenances. To define that it's both new, new structures and modifications to existing structures or appurtenances.
Okay.
The height of.
Proposed.
Any new or existing. Structure or modifications to existing structures.
Yeah. So newer modifications of existing.
And. And or appurtenances.
Okay.
And then the only thing I noticed, we kind of, I think we took off that, like I think Stratum had is, um, they had a question. After will the proposed use have physical impact on the town? There was another question about is the permit in compliance with this ordinance and in the public interest? Uh, I don't know if that's, it seems like that maybe should be taken off because that's up to the board to decide, I would think, not the applicant. But maybe it's there for them to think about and specify how they feel it is in compliance and in public interest.
I can tell you that there's applications to get filed to Stratum and people don't even know what to write for that because it's. It's kind of an odd question to answer on that application.
Yeah.
So that often gets a kind of a short concise thing, like we're just trying to be nice, so.
Yeah.
I would agree that's probably not needed.
I feel like that's something the board would consider, you know.
Yeah.
Where is that one?
It's not, it's not on there. Grab them. That's what I was saying, but it wasn't on ours, so. Wanted to mention it, but, um. Yeah, and then just rereading how conditional use permits work through OSI and HMA. You know, it's really the, the verbiage in the ordinance itself is, is really what's key. It has to be clear and direct and, uh, so I think we're okay and. You know. If we get some of these and we can amend that if we find that we need to strengthen it or change it.
Meaning the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the last thing we didn't mention as part of this, most towns charge a separate fee for conditional use permits. I don't think we have any proposed at this time. It's nothing we have to deal with tonight. We would have to notice it anyway, but. Uh, we might want to kick that around as well, just to make sure that. Obviously, if it's extra work for the staff and everything, we might want to. Have some kind of fee associated with it.
Right.
Yeah, you beat me to that. I assumed if this pass, if the conditional use. Passes for the wetland ordinance area. Then we might need to obviously have that discussion, but it sounds like we might need to have it anyway if we already have a conditional use with no extra. Oh, I imagine. We have, I don't think we've seen a ton of open spaces recently, but there's definitely land for that to occur. Did you have anything else, Ed, or was that all you got?
I think it's plenty.
Okay, um, Joanna, going back, I didn't know, so formatting wise. I don't know if it's worth numbering. Uh, all the questions that we have or all the different response places under supporting? Because I know that when we get to the conditional use related to. Uh, you know, the wetlands and such that we start numbering it there.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I think we should have those numbered just so we can reference.
Yeah, my first thought too is that if we're going to do numbering, then if we kind of do have different sections of numbering, you know, one through X. That we might want to have the ability to say, you know, part A or section A, but I don't know if that, if sectioning. Really works here. But the numbering at a minimum, so we could refer. Somebody had like an inadequate response or something to a certain number, we could refer to which one we're talking about.
Okay, I'll work on the formatting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you went to like page five and seven, those are kind of two new sections. That could be a, a B and a C or something or. So the first section, which is. The supporting information that could all be under A. And then the application of code enforcement, yeah. I think if you can just separate those out into sections.
Okay.
And while we're on page seven, I know it looks like you have highlighted there, section 20. Um, I assume because we need to see how this would be altered to match our ordinance, right?
Right.
Um, trying to think. I'm just trying to see, do you know if this was take, if that language was taken right from like Stratum or something? I'm just trying to see which section.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Okay, so that's section 20 of Stratum.
Yeah.
Can we just leave that out or change it to zoning ordinance? I mean, the requirements of. Uh, the zoning ordinance or do we have to specify the? Specific section in the permit?
I think it would be helpful if we specified it just so it's clear that that's what it's covering.
Well, actually, so I read on, this is to grant us. Grant a special permit to construct a sewage disposal system. So that would actually be. That would be governed under that section. Well, that's under the wetland conservation, right, where we specify the. No septic in 70, within 70, like what you were talking about earlier, Ed, the 75 foot setback and.
Yeah, but I don't think we have that as a conditional use.
Right. So like, if that's the case, if we don't have it established as a conditional use, then we need to. Remove the.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you just pull that out.
Yeah, I was just double checking our draft document and yeah, we don't, the conditional use wouldn't apply to. The pollution control setbacks. So yeah, I would, I would propose that we actually remove that section. For that last section with the three questions. Maybe in the future we'll need it, but right now we don't have a conditional use permit that could be granted for that.
So basically striking page seven.
Page seven, yeah. Page seven would become the signature page on page eight.
That makes it shorter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not losing anything, right? From if we pull up, like, should we maintain those other two items that are in that? Or even all three, uh, something, or are they already kind of captured somewhere else?
Yes, some of them are. I think there's overlap with the ones.
Yeah, they sound repetitive.
Yeah, like number three on page six is similar to when number two on the page seven. Just some slight different verbiage.
I think we'll get the information. It'll just be under a different section.
Yes. And then, Joanna, my last comment is just, I think it's, I don't know if Sue already mentioned it, but. I know what I'm filling some of these out is, I don't know what's going to do our page count, but. Just if we start like so on number, page five, where number two starts and then has two lines that kind of overlap to the next page. Just for clarity, so we can maybe move number two to the next page so that the entire. All the lines are there, so I imagine that's just some, some format editing there.
Yeah, I decided I wasn't going to take care of that part until I got all of the edits and then I was going to separate pages.
Okay, all right, well, that's, I think that's all I've got that I kind of circled on mine.
The other part is that, I mean, we could reduce how many lines are underneath these and if they need to. Expand, they can provide a separate page or document.
Okay.
Yeah, I have seen, I have seen at times where, like at the beginning of, on page two, at the beginning of where we say supporting information. Sometimes by having it numbered and then using any section, you know, separate sections if we need to, as I've, I've in the past, you know, included a separate Word document. With a response to each. Which obviously allows you to keep the application shorter. Um, but then if somebody needs to provide a lot of extra detail in one section, they can do that. So I don't know if we just leave it open for people to do that or make reference to ensuring that they attach separate documents needed. I usually just do it based on how many lines are given to me. And my handwriting is not small.
Is this the form they'll print out and write in the answers or will they be able to fill it in electronically?
I would hope that it's an editable PDF.
Yeah, okay.
And if that wasn't considered, I think we need to.
I think that's a good idea because then you could just, I think on the PDF, you just provide a box under each one that they would just type in.
Yeah.
If we have that capability.
And I didn't get a chance to read what Sue's were, but. Joanna, does that give you enough to kind of get a final draft together?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I was looking for Sue's comments. I can't find them right now either.
That's okay. Well, I see hand raised and maybe there's someone who wants some input. I'd happy to answer. Give Charlene the floor here.
Thanks, Dirk, Charlene Anderson. I just had a couple of comments on page two, three and four. In some cases, it's the, it's asked as a question, like, will the proposed, and in other cases, it's. Uh, referenced as described or explained. And I think described or explained seems to be a better fit. Because I think, you know, just based on past experience, sometimes when you ask a question, it just gets a really quick. Yes or no, and there's not an explanation which kind of shows that they've really thought about the impact, so. Think on pages two, three and four, if some of those were, it says, will, you know, will the. Uh, maybe switch it to explain. And then the only other thing that I had a, a comment on and. It's not applicable to each one, but just in every areas where there could be an impact to groundwater. You know, if that could be also listed as some of the impacts. Especially given kind of drought situations that continue to occur. That's all I had. Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Good points.
I think it would be pretty easy just to rephrase the beginning of those and remove any question marks.
Okay.
To get rid of all the questions, really.
Right.
Okay.
Any others?
I had one quick comment. If I could.
Yes, please.
Um, in the lot dimensions. I, I think we've definitely run into the issue where the front of the lot and the front road frontage is not one in the same. And then going off of that, it doesn't always have just four sides to it. Um, I don't know if there's a way that we can alter that to encompass those funky shaped lots and also lots that have. Frontage and a front that's not the same size. There's not the same length.
I guess my first thought is, do we even? Is my first thought is, do we even need that line if we assume that this would accompany a plan that would provide all that?
That's a good point.
I think it's a good idea to keep the acreage on there. That's a quick one to put on there, but.
Yeah, I kind of like that there's a frontage, so maybe we can drop the other. Right rear and sides and then just. Put a line that says, you know, lot frontage.
So instead of lot dimensions, just lot frontage?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, to, I just wanted to revisit Shirley's comment. I was thinking of a good spot to make reference to that. Possibly place the groundwater, you know, any possible concerns with the groundwater? And it looks like that would actually fall, I guess it would be the first statement on page three about the external impacts. We place a, we have a list in there with like traffic, noise, odors, vibration, dust, fumes, hours of operation, lighting. Impacts to groundwater would, could in theory just fall right into that list.
It was in there. I agree.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
All right. Well, good. Um, let's see if we can maybe just get a. Final draft, maybe in two weeks.
I will work on that.
Great, thank you.
One, one question on this though, sorry, one last question. It's Mr. Veal. And I questioned this on the Stratum one too, so they're asking an applicant to tell us if they know that there's already existing violations of, of the zoning ordinance. It's like self-reporting, but what do we do with that information? This has kind of come up on some other plans where, you know, something is, looks like there might be a violation, but, you know, how do we take that and what do we do with it? At the application level versus, you know, we're kicking something back to code enforcement. And I'm not really clear yet on how, how that will to overlap or. How do we? Address that without overstepping our bounds or should we address it?
Well, are they violations that aren't reported or are these reported violations? So if they're reported violations, then they should have a, you know, understanding of what those are and what the explanations are. But yeah, I don't know that. They would self-report.
I'm fine with keeping it in. Like I said, other, other towns keep it on there. It's just. Something that you and I are trying to figure out.
Okay. Let's leave it in there and if, if it gets, think about it a little bit more and. We strike it out on the final, then that's okay.
Also, if we, if we approve this, um, obviously we're just working this through. Is there, are we allowed, say we, say we receive a couple of these and we find that we're getting wishy-washy answers or. We're finding maybe some that don't apply or we want to add. Is there a process, like if we accept this application and all, if that's like a formal thing, can we amend that at any time or is it like you do that at a yearly? Like if we need to update the application, is that done at any time?
I believe we just have to hold another public hearing. Or and post it, well, let Steph or Dirk confirm, but pretty certain that with, with these kind of minor planning board things, that it's just a public hearing.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware. I'd have to, I can't answer that for sure.
Believe it follows whatever process. It followed to become instated. So if it came from the select board or if the select board had comment, it needs, they need to do that same. Process for amendments.
So I have a question regarding, uh, yeah, just, just like a, let's call it a subdivision application. So we have the opportunity to go to. All right, let's say police, fire, road department, et cetera. Where we have questions. Would this one, would this? Uh, conditional use permit be a similar situation or? Or not? Um, just a question that came up for me.
Well, I think this would only be applicable to the. The wetlands.
Strictly wetlands.
Yeah, that's all we're allowing it for. And that's to, so that it doesn't have to go to the zoning board. For each one of these.
And Gary, I think, I think what you're saying is, you know, like with site plan and subdivision, we can request that, right? And Gary, I think, I think what you're saying is, you know, like with site plan and subdivision, we can request that, right? Is that what you're kind of implying?
Yeah, exactly. And, and I'm thinking about, and I know we don't do this currently, but sometimes. Actually have an application do for ADU, they do a conditional use permit. It just as an example, so that's a different. I know it's not wetland, so it's something else altogether. So that's what I'm thinking about is. Should this become applicable somewhere else?
Yeah, I think we can adopt it or modify it, you know, with a public hearing as if those things. Arise and then, you know, we probably would have more input, but these are usually with a subdivision application.
Right.
As I was gonna say, they accompany a site plan or subdivision.
Yeah.
I think at this point.
And I think the current practice for anything that's coming as an application to the planning board, I think we forward over to the different departments, staff departments for. You know, so they could provide input if they so choose. Is that right, Joanna? Do we do that for all?
I send them, send all the other subdivision and cyclone applications to the. Other technical review departments after you guys have accepted them as complete.
Answers my question. Thank you.
All right, well, let's move on to the rest of the meeting items. So I guess next would be some staff and board member updates. Let me, I guess, if anyone's ready, or I'll just, Gary, he's unmuted.
Yes. The only thing that is on my list right now is. SRPs put out. The opportunity through DOT for. Road hazards and. Look at safety studies in different areas and, and in talking with. Our fire chief about. Places that we've had any issues. The only place really that exists for Nottingham. Currently is. Or the only, the most dangerous place, I'll, I'll put it that way. Would be at the end of Route 152 and Route four, that intersection, which has been flagged by DOT and was looked at some time ago. As far as I know, nothing, no action was really taken, but there was supposed to be something done. So that's a question mark for me, and I just, I kind of wanted to hear or run it by the board and. Whether this should be brought back to. Stratford Regional and DOT again or not.
That's not actually Nottingham, that's actually Northwood.
Right, but Nottingham was, was involved with DOT and Stratford Regional.
Only, only when they were talking about moving the intersection.
Right, well, that was one of the. That was one of, well, it was, it's still an issue for Nottingham because. Nottingham has to respond to Route four accidents. So yeah, that's where that comes into play.
One thing they could do immediately is try to relocate that telephone pole that's in that section right there, because. When you watch cars come up to that, they're trying to turn. It's a, creates a blind spot for them, for traffic coming from, from the west. Heading east, so it's a, I think they could do that pretty easily from there. I know it's a much bigger. Undertaking, it'd be either shifting the intersection, taking some land. I think they, I think the state bought some land and have it still, but. As I say, that intersection, I think the other one that comes up a lot is 153 and 156. Trying to improve that.
The, unfortunately, to apply under the, this particular. I guess, application, if that's the right word. You have to prove fatal accidents, et cetera. Anyway, that's the one place that actually is in the category and. The last I know, I knew, the. DOT was after meetings, et cetera, with Nottingham, Northwood. They were talking about doing something with signage, which was the least expensive way and. Easiest way to handle it, but not, I don't even think that was done, so. I just. Thought it might be worth mentioning again.
Definitely think those, those items plus, you know, I think it's just, just to the, if you're heading. If you're coming to that intersection from the, from the east. The speed increases, I think, right there, too, if I remember correctly. I think there's a speed limit sign right, right before that. So I think they could probably adjust the speeds from the west and the east in that section. And I think the other thing that's been created. Through, through Waze and Google Maps and all those kind of fun things is. That intersection now is directly across from Cooper Hill Road, which becomes a perfect cut over for people heading to 202, so they don't go. So if they shift the intersection, I think they have to be cognizant of that, where. You're going to have people possibly entering onto Route four just to hurry up and turn back off onto Cooper Hill. Or vice versa.
So I also wondered if selectmen had heard anything about this recently, because that definitely falls into their, their realm as well.
Yeah. We haven't heard anything about it. I, I would agree, it's a dangerous intersection. Same as, even though it's Nottingham as well as Mitchell Road and 125. That's one of the scariest intersections we have, I believe, too. Even though it's innately, I guess, considered the, where the intersection is, but. I'd be for lights at there if they do it.
May I speak?
Who's that?
Charlene Anderson.
Oh, yes, Charlene.
Yes, so just speaking on this, I can share with you, while, so while I was on the select board in 2017. The town of Nottingham, I was representing the town of Nottingham. And as well as there was the Northwood Town Administration Administrator at the time. And DOT met to discuss this very thing. And at that time. Your DOT had, like, as Gary had said. Has identified this as a dangerous intersection, and at that time, they were proposing. An intersection conflict warning system, which is new technology with DOT. But it's used in rural settings in other states, and the system detects vehicles approaching on 152 and Cooper Hill. And it sends a signal to the controller turning on beacons on Route four. And at that time, DOT was piloting three of these types of systems in 2018. And if the pilots were successful, they were expecting to be able to install one in 2019. And that system would be hotwired to Concord Traffic Control. So it, it does seem like I agree with Gary that it, you know, there'd probably be some follow-up. Updates to where that is. And I had submitted my notes to Chris Sterndale, as well as. I believe at that time to the, the Chief of Police to notify them. So. Chris would have my notes on file, or I could send them as well as, I just pulled them up, so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Jerome.
I'll ask you about this at the select board meeting Monday night as well.
Okay. Ian, do you have anything?
Nothing for me.
Tyler?
No, we didn't have a meeting after the deliberative session, and we meet Monday.
Okay. Leanne?
Nope, nothing for me.
Buzz?
All set.
Joanna?
I'm good right now, thank you.
And Ed?
I know you were skipping me. Nothing, nothing big, just. As I was looking at our frontage tonight, and this might be something to kind of review with Steph, is I noticed that we don't, our frontage definition. It's not great, and it doesn't, it's just length of, length on a, on a road. Most towns have, if there's a curve involved, if it's on a cul-de-sac, things like that, that, that it changes the definition to like an arc or. Or whatever, so it might be something we consider or take a look at for the future. I didn't, in our current ordinance, and maybe that is something we should consider as to, especially as cul-de-sacs kind of become more popular. It might be in there, but I didn't see it off top of my, my review, so.
Okay. I have just a couple of things. I just wanted to update the board that we received. An appeal to the administrative decision. From the trustees of Kubota Trust for the snowmobile races. The appeal is specifically stating that. The board, the planning board. Did not need to. Does not require this to be go to the zoning board. Their application. I just got it today, so I have to dig into it a little bit more. Just let you guys know that. I'll update you as I can.
So does that come back to us, or does the Ministry of Appeal get handled by either ZBA or? I know there's that separate board now for the state, but I think it's subdivisions.
We just got it today. I'll have to get back to you. I don't know.
Yeah, my first thought is usually appeals for the planning board, go to the zoning board, but they're appealing to zoning board, so curious, I'd be curious where this goes, yeah.
And then the other question to that is, I don't think that impacts our site walk that's scheduled for next Wednesday, correct?
It's correct. They've provided authorization. And it's, yeah, a notified, I mean, they, they still have a site plan application before us.
So this is like a linear process, so essentially things keep moving forward unless we're, unless something arises?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I'd rather not answer incorrectly right now.
Sure.
Okay, Steph, do you have anything? Well, I know you have something.
Yes. So I have two things now. So there's an appeals section in the planning board handbook. If you just search New Hampshire Planning Board Handbook, the OSI handbook pops up. And there's an appeals section as it relates to RSA 67715. And that is in chapter five, page 19. And it runs through. Appeals process.
I have it on my screen. I have it on my screen. I just didn't have time to read it before this meeting, so I will get back to you on that.
Just if anybody else wanted to brush up on that.
Thank you.
And my other piece of news is that as of May 14th, I will no longer be working at the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. So I will not be your contract planner anymore. I've taken a position with the city of Portsmouth as one of their city planners. Which I'm really excited about, and I think that you guys will be in good hands with Jen and the rest of the circuit riding team. They're already pretty familiar with Nottingham because we work as a team for the most part anyways, but. You guys will be getting new representation and I'm sure you'll learn more about that soon. So. The next planning board meeting will be my last one with you guys.
Well, congratulations.
Congratulations. We're gonna miss you.
Yeah, we'll miss you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Yeah, even, even though you say that we'll be in good hands with the rest of the staff, we know there is not as good as your hands.
Aw, thanks, Dirk.
You're welcome. We will definitely miss you. But it's a, a great opportunity. Sounds good. Sounds like a fun, fun one.
Boom for us, great for you. Thank you. We'll save the tears for the next.
Very excited.
Leanne already put them up.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I don't want to end on bad news, so do we have minutes?
Yes, we do.
All right.
Nothing like a pick-me-up like minutes.
I know, that's what I was thinking.
Get a full review of them. I know Sue Mooney had sent through some edits. So I'd be fine with tabling.
Okay, we can hold off.
I moved up the table.
All right, we, we don't need to vote, but we'll table it, but let's put them off until the next meeting.
But thank you, Joanna, for getting them out so quickly.
That comes to the end of this meeting. And as usual, I would entertain a motion to end this meeting.
So be it.
So moved. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, Steph.